Ladies and gentlemen, I'd like to call our meeting to order. Mr. Clerk, would you please take roll call?
Abe Abdalo.
Here.
Bill Bazey.
Here.
Robert Constant. Robert Constant. Robert Constant is absent. Lisa Hicks Clayton.
Here.
Denise Malinowski Maxwell.
Here.
Ray Muscat.
Here.
Tom Wenzel.
Here.
Madam Chair, you have a quorum.
Thank you. At this point, I'd like to have Councilman Wenzel lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. For which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone. Please be seated. Next, we have agenda approval.
Madam Chair.
Councilwoman Hicks Clayton.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Move to approve the Order of Business for July 14th, 2020, electronically held regular meeting of the Dearborn Heights City Council Virtual Meeting. This is an amended agenda as submitted, Madam Chair.
Support.
Support by Councilwoman Muscat. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. We have approval minutes. This is minutes from the electronically held regular meeting of June 23rd, 2020.
Madam Chair.
Councilwoman Abdalo.
I move that we approve the minutes from June 23rd, 2020, electronically held regular meeting of the Dearborn Heights City Council Virtual Meeting as outlined in item 4A.
Support.
Support by Councilwoman Hicks Clayton. Is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. Before we go further, I think Councilman Constant just joined us. Let's get him. Okay. Let's let the record note that Councilman Constant is now joining us for the meeting. Next, we have public hearing and comment on agenda items. This is for the audience to comment on the agenda. You have two minutes. Go ahead. Anyone?
The mayor has.
Yeah. Dana Parrish, go ahead.
Good evening, Madam Chair. I have comments on two agenda items. The first would be on agenda item 8C, the veto of motion approving resolution of the Dearborn Heights City Council related to the initiation of financial review. I don't understand what the intention of the veto from the mayor is. It is obviously his right as the mayor of the city to veto any motion by the city council. But I think it's a wasted time. And I think it's time for the city to get on with the business of conducting a financial review. We've been to court on this issue, and I hope his intentions are not to further delay the financial review and that he doesn't end up taking this to court, passing a residence to the city of Dearborn Heights for the money. The next is on item 11A, Councilwoman Hicks Clayton, resolution of the City of Dearborn Heights City Council to subpoena records from the comp store. I fully support for a resolution to subpoena the records from the comp store. Thank you very much, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Next, we have Councilman Muscat. Are you going to raise your hand?
Yes, I do.
You're commenting as a resident?
As a resident.
Okay, hold on. Let me restart this. Go ahead, please.
Thank you, Council Chair and honorable council members. Ray Muscat, 26911 Havelock Street. I'd like to comment on 8B if I may do so, please. This is about the capital improvement bonds for the motion of 20-204. This has been in a progress for almost 10 years now. And in those 10 years, I'm sure the cost of labor and materials has gone up significantly in those 10 years. We are now put into a position on the 11th hour and 59th minute that we have to approve something. This has gone on too many times where this council and previous councils all had to do something in the last minute. By approving this, it's 16,000, 16,300,000, but what the real cost of this is $30 million bond, not 16,300,000, but $30 million. I'll be approximately 96 years old when this bond gets paid off. I'll never see it being paid off. And I'm sure there are maybe city officials that will not run again for office, that will leave office and go to a different city and not have to pay this, okay? This is the legacy that we're leaving for the future generation of Dearborn Heights is last-minute decisions, always last-minute decisions. And not to have had the input of the residents of this city for the last 10 years is unbelievable to me at best. Now, I know as a city councilman, I have a decision to make. I have no choice but how to vote for this now. The choice was taken away from me by waiting for the last minute for this project to be done. It's got to be done in the next three years. And this right here on 8B, the approximate cost of $16,300,000, the cost of this with everything else rolled in is $30 million. Remember that. And I'm very upset that I have to do what I got to do, and I'll apologize to the residents of this city now. Thank you. Have a good day.
Thank you. I have Commissioner Vance. Did you mean to raise your hand? Can we find her?
I got her.
Okay. Commissioner, did you mean to raise your hand?
Yes, I did.
Are you?
Well, I'm not a resident, but I'd like to comment on an agenda item.
If you're commenting, fine, but if you're answering somebody's question, you can't do that.
I'm not answering anyone's question.
Okay.
Okay. So I am commenting on 11A regarding the ordinance, the resolution. In this resolution, it states that I am refusing to provide regular financial reports to the city council. I am not refusing to provide them, but the June financial statement is the year-end fiscal financial statement, and that financial statement is not done until all the closing entries are entered. It is not a common practice to submit anything prior to that being finalized. I have no problem submitting it when the financial report is ready and finalized. And that's what I'd like to say. I mean, this is, it's the year-end report. It's not like a monthly report like the other ones. The monthlies are done on a cash basis. The year-end financial statement is done by accrual, and that's why it takes time to get this prepared, and that's why it takes several months for me to prepare it. And I have no problem giving it to the council when it is ready. So I wanted clarification on that.
Thank you. Next, we have mayor. Hold on, let me unmute you. There you are. You're commenting as a resident?
Yes. I'm talking about 11A.
Okay.
What is the old saying? That it's better to stay quiet than to speak and let the whole world know how little knowledge you have on a subject. Councilwoman Lisa Hicks Clayton is showing us how little knowledge she has on financial matters. And thank you for joining us before the election for treasurer. It's important to have a year-end.
Madam Chair, point of order.
Okay. Councilwoman, point of order, let him speak. He is speaking as a resident.
Talk about campaign material. It violates city council procedures, Madam Chair.
All right, all right. How, Ms. City Clerk, can you please clarify that? Mr. Clerk?
Muted.
Yes, the, we should stay away from political, any kind of political things about people running for office.
Okay, then I will no longer allow that to continue. At this point, is there any other public hearings and comment on agenda items?
Do you have a hand raised?
Okay, Zoo here. Let me unmute you.
Can you hear me?
Yes. You have two minutes. Go ahead.
First, good evening to everybody. Second, I want to thank all the employees who are standing at the doors to keep our residents safe. And please let me say this, and I want to comment on 8C. I believe, I believe our residents deserve to know the financial situation of the city after many, many, many years, we didn't do any audit except the Plant Moran Audit. And looking at audit reports from Plant Moran, there are so many things which are deficiencies which haven't been corrected for many, many years. And I think we don't need to waste more money. When $600 an hour as veto claims for lawyer or 675 for two lawyers joining, you know, in a meeting. Let's not forget that the mayor hired $500 an hour lawyer. So far, we spent over $100,000. And if we go to court on this issue, we're going to spend more money, which is enough, in my opinion, to do the forensic audit from the beginning to the end. I think we should, you know, come to our senses and stop this, you know, back and forth fight. And let's get on with our business because this is not your money. This is the residents' money, and we should do the forensic audit as soon as possible. And thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other comment on, okay, I have Vince.
Okay. Mike Blackburn has had his hand up for a minute.
Okay, I couldn't see that page. Can you take his hand down and lower his hand? Unmute him.
Then Corporation Counselor has his hand up as well. Okay.
And Mr. Blackburn?
Yes.
Okay, go ahead.
This is on 8B. Whether you want to call it kicking the can down the road or the 11th hour. 10, 10 years ago, we were in a financial crisis and it was, work was postponed because of that. And I think this is a smart idea. I think it should get passed. And I want to say thank you in advance to all the council members that are going to vote yes for this. And that is it.
Thank you. Can you unmute Mr. Miyaki?
I got it.
And this is on a, okay, there you go.
Very good. Gary Miyaki, Plainfield Street. I wasn't going to comment, but I think that it would be appropriate to do so with regard to the mayor's veto. There are a number of things that are attributed to me. This is indeed accurate in terms of what it says. The legal concerns that have been raised are not insignificant, like knowing exactly what amount per hour will be paid to the accounting firm, which is unknown at this present time.
Okay, what you're doing, Mr. Miyaki, is you're answering a question that somebody, you should just be commenting.
Council Chair, I'm perfectly free to do so as a, as a resident and even not as a resident to end up commenting on any agenda item how I would see fit.
Right, but you are commenting as our corporate counsel attorney in regards to what you wrote.
Not, well, I normally am not given an opportunity to raise these issues if I, if I try to raise them. So that's why I'm raising the issues at this point. And I'm not charging for the time, consistent with what I've stated to Councilman Bazey before with respect to this. My point is, is that I don't think the mayor's veto nor the comments that I've raised have ended up having to say that you cannot do a financial review. It's just a comment about how it should end up being pursued and trying to make sure that, for example, you don't violate the Open Meetings Act and that you also are in a position where you know, for example, are you paying $250 per hour for Raymond Robeson? Are you paying $375 per hour? Very simple things like that. Who's the contract with? There is no clarity with regard to that because frankly, these issues should have been clarified in advance, and they haven't done. So these issues should still be clarified. If they are, you can still proceed with your financial review. And I think until you know what's going to happen or have some sort of maximum amounts involved in this, any sort of an agreement, it's very difficult to say how much is going to end up being incurred with regard to this financial review.
Okay, we've gone out of time. Thank you. Any other, oh, council, I'm sorry. Mr. Vince? I'm going to unmute him. Go ahead.
I didn't have any comment. There was.
Oh, you raised your hand.
I tried to erase it, but, sorry.
Okay, no problem. Any other hands out there?
Not that I am seeing.
Okay. Let's move on. Next, we have fund transfers and current claims.
Madam Chair.
Councilwoman Hicks Clayton.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I move to approve current claims 61 through 638 as submitted.
Or?
Support by Councilwoman Abdalo. Is there any discussion?
Council Chair.
Councilman Muscat.
On our legal page, I think it's 66. Why do we have so much rhetoric going on and being charged about correspondence about COVID, the COVID situation? Letters here, letters here. I mean, this is something that lawyers are just going back and forth and making money on, on writing letters about the COVID. But what, I don't understand what's going on.
Councilman, I have to agree with you. The COVID comes down from our governor, and there really is not much more you can do with whatever she orders.
Yeah, and there's so much charging going on about the COVID. I understand we're going to pay it, but we need to curtail it a little bit here, okay? We're spending a lot of money on something that's coming from the governor's office and probably the Attorney General's office is already looked at. So that's my main concern about, about that. And the other one question I have is on 631, the water main. On the, on that, it says CDBG. Why is, are they paying any part of this?
Director Hashem, he's here. Oh, here he is. Director Hashem, are you there? That's, that's Director Salome. You've got poor connection on your internet. You're coming through garble.
Which one item are you talking about, Councilman?
I believe it's 631. The last, it's a water main, and it says CDBG on it. See, when I get, when I get them here, they're not numbered, so I kind of counted.
I would like to send this to Director Salome. I'm not really sure. We did contribute ourselves $250,000 to the water main. However, I really cannot speak of which one this is and what the cost is. If we did pay some money into it, that's probably what it is. We did contribute $250,000 last year to the water main, but I don't have the documentation to support which one, and Director Salome will be the one to answer that.
For 30, it's for water main, $30,063.
Yeah.
Now, I take that back. $45,579 and street construction, $7,161. What part of that is CDBG money?
I don't have that information in front of me, Councilman. If we paid for it, again, we paid $250,000 toward a water main. And then I believe we did pay some money for the planning for the new water main, the engineering that is. Now, how Director Salome split that out, I don't know. I don't have that documentation in front of me. I think that question should be answered by the director.
Well, I'm asking somebody to give me a.
I didn't send that in, so I don't have the answer for that. DPW, John, go ahead.
Can you hear me?
No.
No.
How about if I give you a call tomorrow, Mr. Salome, and maybe you can explain it to me? Okay, because I'm sure there's got to be a pretty good answer for it because I'm looking at it now. It's account number 202, 202-880-0300, street construction of $45,000. Main streets here I'm looking at. I have to go back, and I'll give you a call tomorrow, and I apologize to city council for taking up their time, but I'll give you a call tomorrow, Mr. Salome.
All right. That's good. Thank you.
Okay. Is there any other discussion in regards to this agenda item number six? Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. Next item on the agenda is consideration of bids. We have DPW Director Salome bid award for city-owned lots, grass cutting.
Madam Chair.
Councilwoman Abdalo.
I move that we concur with Public Works Director John Salome, who has reviewed all the grass cutting bids received, and it is a recommendation of the department to that city council that we award the contract to Artistic Landscaping and Lawn Service an amount of $4,000 per cut for all city-owned property listed in the bid document. And this takes effect on July the 1st, 2020 through June 30th, 2022, as outlined in item 7A. And then also authorized to return the bid bonds outlined in 7A.
Support.
Support by Councilwoman Hicks Clayton. Is there any discussion?
Madam Chair.
Councilman Bazey.
Again, you know, I'm not comfortable voting for this one. Like I mentioned before, you know, it's still items under 15. It asks companies to have worksman comp insurance, and this one particular company does not. You know, I looked it up again, and it still does not have it. And I know that the director mentioned that somebody, they can hold us, you know, there's a harness agreement. I don't agree with that. We still, the city of Dearborn Heights is still liable if any of their employees get hurt on a job. I think a city of Dearborn Heights is still liable. So again, I'm not comfortable with that, voting on this one. And you know, just because somebody doesn't have insurance, you know, they give an edge over this contract. And I'm, you know, what the director McIntyre mentions, you know, like, you know, he's, he's crashing another company, which is pretty unprofessional. You know, and I have not heard anything bad about any of the, I mean, even our, you know, this particular company, you know, it's just not right to bash a company just to boost one company. And I don't even know why we're even putting up for bids if he's still favoring our company over another company. Be voting no on this.
Yes, I just wanted to comment about the workman's comp insurance. When you're hiring a contractor, you need the liability insurance. We are not liable if he doesn't have workman's comp. That's between an employer and the employees. So that's why the city, when we do our bids, we ask for liability insurance because it doesn't fall on us if he has the insurance or not for his employees. It falls on the liability insurance if something happens while they're mowing and, and you know, they smash into a vehicle or whatever accident or something happens. So I just wanted a little clarification.
The contract asked for it. It's under section 815. So if you're not going to do that, why put it in a contract?
When the contractor signs the contract with the city, that will have to be provided for us to award the contract.
Yeah, we get writers for that once contracts are signed.
And the other thing is, we asked DPW to also quote the same jobs. I have not seen anything from DPW. I asked that few months back before COVID, that when you guys put this in front of us, we'd like to find out what it would take to bring it in-house and for DPW to do the same job. And that has not been provided yet.
So with the, with the quote that's provided, it's going to be about anywhere from $48,000 to $56,000 for the entire season to cut the grass. That would barely employ one employee with benefits and legacy costs. So, and currently, we're down four positions. To try to hire people right now is, is very difficult, is something I look at hard. And that's, that's the spots that I can give you that is most cost-effective to do it this way.
Commissioner McIntyre, did you have your hand up? Hold on.
No.
And I got Councilwoman Abdalo next.
Yeah, I, just in response, I, I didn't bash a company. I told you what I was getting from a company. I did mention that when I first came here, and I put the disclaimer in there, that what I was referring to had nothing to do with the contractors that are applying for this position. I made that very clear. But I did wanted to show you the progression of when I first came here, we had a lot of contractors that I felt were overinflating invoices. And we're now with a company that I've never, ever had to be concerned about that. So if you heard it that way, Councilman Bazey, I apologize if you, if you heard it that way. So that's, that was not my intention to do that. But I will say, I was asked directly by one of the, one of your colleagues to, to tell me the difference of good and bad of why I, I, I wanted, why I'm going with the company that I'm recommending. And I thought I did it very diplomatically. I thought I did it respectfully by, by just going with the compliments of the company that we have. The reason, if you, the other question you said is, why are we going out for bid? Well, you asked me to go out for bid. I never wanted to go out for bid. I wanted to stay with the company that's doing the best job. So.
Next, we have Councilman Constant. Did you still have something to say?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Councilman Bazey, do you mean that Artistic doesn't have workers' comp insurance for their employees? You're not saying that they should have workers' comp, that you're saying that Artistic, it appears to you that Artistic does not have workers' comp for their artistic employees. Is that correct?
Correct. It's under section 15 in the contract.
And did you all receive a letter from Artistic's insurance agent where he carries his coverage? Because I got one, and I assume that you were all copied on it, where it states that he has liability coverage twice the amount that we're asking for. And he has workers, workers, not workmen's, but workers' compensation insurance. So I'm not sure.
We have Councilman Abdalo next, please.
This is for Director McIntyre. I just wanted to get a clarification, and that's not the main factor, but it's a factor for me. I always prefer that we go with local companies, local Dearborn Heights companies that are from Dearborn Heights. So a question I have for you, the third company was not a, had nothing to do with Dearborn Heights. And I really think in this particular case, it really should be a local company because of the logistics. Mr. Constant? Anyways, okay, so I prefer somebody in Dearborn Heights. And a question I have for you, I know Artistic is in Dearborn Heights. The other one has a P O box. I'm asking, are they, because you mentioned only one of them is in Dearborn Heights. So I'm just, just wanted to get a clarification. Is the second company located, is either in Dearborn Heights or extremely close to Dearborn Heights?
I'm, I know they're not located in Dearborn Heights. They may have been at one time, but they're not anymore. But I can't tell you where exactly their, their truck yard is or where their office is, but it's not in Dearborn Heights. So I don't.
Is it close? Is it a neighboring city?
All I can tell you is I believe he told me at one time that he, he himself resides in Milford, but I don't know where his business is located. But I do think, I do think he has a yard that is, is in a neighboring city, like where he stores some, some vehicles.
Okay, and the second question I have for you, and this may be appropriate, awkward, or just, but I'm just going to talk about the elephant in the room. Does anybody in the city, and I'm just, this is across the board, everybody from A to Z in the city, have any type, so this is not meant towards somebody specific, have any type of affiliation, financial gain, et cetera, et cetera, from any one of these companies that we as council are considering?
I don't. I don't know if any council people have used either of these companies in the past. I think maybe one has, one council person, but for me personally, no, no.
So there's no financial gain or family affiliation, et cetera, et cetera?
No, none.
You're aware, I mean, you should be aware of it, obviously.
Well, I can speak only for myself. No, absolutely not.
But none that you're aware of, at least.
None that I'm aware of, no.
Okay, thank you.
We have Councilman Muscat next.
No, I'm sorry. I hit the button. No, I'm sorry. Uh, I hit the button by accident. Sorry.
Okay, any further discussion on agenda item seven A?
I do have one question, if you don't mind. I, I, I'm sorry, but I didn't realize that I could actually put this on the agenda today because I thought I had to wait for the study session before I could do that. I guess, uh, Mr. Salome was more savvy than I was and just assumed that this was, the study session was going to take place today. Are, are, I know that what's up on the agenda right now is just, uh, Mr. Salome's bid for the, what we call the city cuts out of DPW. Are we, are we also considering my bid at this point?
It's not on the agenda.
So I could just bring it back at another time?
Bring it on the next one.
Okay, I'll do that. Thank you.
Sure. Okay, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Councilman Bazey is opposed. Um, the ayes have it. Next item on the agenda is report from Mayor. This is major local street budget for twenty twenty-one.
Madam Chair.
Councilman Coniston?
I move we adopt the, uh, major and local street budget for fiscal year twenty twenty and twenty twenty-one as submitted, as outlined in item eight A.
Support.
Turned by Councilwoman Hicks Clayton, is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
No.
Councilman Bazey is opposed. The ayes have it. Next item on the agenda is, um, response to City Council motion twenty two oh four intent resolution for capital improvement bond.
No, that's.
Council Chair.
No, that's, you're going to see.
That's number B, eight B. It says, response to Council motion twenty dash two oh four.
No, you skipped one, Council Chair.
No, I did the major and local streets budget for twenty twenty-one. This is eight D one.
All right, eight B.
Correct, correct, okay.
Are you okay with that? Okay, let's do it again. Response to Council motion twenty dash two oh four intent resolution for capital improvement bond.
Ben Chair.
Councilman, I'm sorry, who do we have here?
Dave Abdallah.
Councilman Abdullah.
So I'm just going to do the motion just to open it up for discussion because obviously this is a very important subject. Uh, I move that we concur with Mayor Dan Pletko, uh, who has sent the administration request to have a town hall. I'm sorry, who had mentioned that the city council sent the administration request to have a town hall meeting on the intent resolution for capital improvement bonds per city council motion two, two zero dash two zero four, a copy of which is attached. And he went on to mention how this would be hard to orchestrate such a meeting during COVID nineteen. And the state of Michigan has mandated that the L forty-three, L forty-one and L forty-two C S O projects be completed within the next three, three years. And this has an approximate cost of sixteen million, three hundred thousand. A bond would be spread, would spread this cost over many years as reflected in the current and future water budgets prepared with assistance of Plant Moran. And he mentioned that without bonding, this cost would drastically increase in water rates over the next few years. Uh, again, he mentions there is no option not to, and it's capitalized, to do or pay for the improvements. Only options are to bond or pay for these improvements as the work is done. And this is as outlined in item eight B.
Support.
Support.
Turned by Councilman Coniston, is there any discussion?
Council Chair.
Councilman Muscat.
We had a study session on this. And what we discussed was a thirty million dollar bond. And here it's only sixteen million, three hundred thousand dollars. One, I'd like to know what we're going to be approving here. Is it just a sixteen three or close to thirty million dollars? And as far as, uh, the other, uh, things that were spoken about earlier today in the, uh, public comments about the city was not in a financial position to do this, that's hogwash. Okay, this was something that would have been paid for anyway. It's been ten years. I'll bet you this has increased at least two million dollars, if not more, since that time. So we're just getting more money. Yes, I understand how important it is, but that's hogwash about we were in financial trouble. We could have done this anytime in the last ten years, not just today. Okay? That's my comment for it.
Unmuted, Mayor, go ahead.
Okay, um, what, that, the resolution that needs to be passed, it should, I unfortunately didn't include it, but that is the resolution that was done by Bond Council with a notice of intent. My concern is, and actually, I would have also included the eight hundred thousand dollars that we were looking at in changing the lead leads to people's homes. So what I basically did was take out the water meter project and thought that that might be, uh, because that's discretionary. But these three projects are mandated because city of Dearborn was forced by the state to do their C S O projects. Inkster has done theirs. And we're just, the strip area of Dearborn Heights is in the middle. And the state wants to get that done. So the resolution that really needs to be passed was that resolution that Bond Council prepared. I was simply lowering the figure down because I don't see how we can get out of the L forty-three, forty-one and forty-two C S O projects. But the water main is discretionary. And I would also, uh, so I kind of came up with a number, but that's what I did. I took those, I took that project out, but if I had it all over to do, I would have put the eight hundred thousand in for the, uh, changing the lead, uh, leads to the people's homes.
Council Chair.
Councilman Bazey's next. Are you still talking?
Well, that was in response to what I was going to keep saying here.
Go ahead.
Because it, it does concern the, just the sixteen million, three hundred thousand. And I do, and I do also believe the, the water meters are not that, not mandatory. But I do believe that the water main leads to the homes must be included. So if the, if the project was eight hundred thousand dollars, that should be included in this motion because we can't have people with lead in their water, can't have it. I won't vote on this at all if that's not included. People need to have safe drinking water today.
Councilman John Salome has a comment. Go ahead, please.
Yes, thank you. Just a couple of clarifications here. The lead water, the lead line replacement program is already in place. It's already a budgeted item in the current water and sewer budget. We are moving forward with that. That's not a part of this bond sale. The L forty-three is underway now. That construction is currently starting, uh, started last week. That could be part of the bond sale. But the lead service line is a budgeted item. And this budget has, it's not anything to do with the upcoming bond sale if the council decided to go in that direction. L forty-three is a funded, uh, project within this current budget also. The thought was from the bond council was to, um, use the money from the bond sale to help pay L forty-three so you didn't drain down the cash account in the water fund.
I'm confused.
Councilman Bazey next.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Yeah, this, this is also, I mean, I don't agree with the, today's technology. We, we can still have the town hall meetings with, uh, you know, virtual meeting with residents. The other thing is, uh, it's, you know, Director Salome already answered. We, we already budgeted for the, for the lead, uh, issue. And the other thing is, uh, the vagueness of this, this thing here, you know, you're, you're mentioning, okay, approximate cost of sixteen million, three hundred thousand. And again, you know, it's, it's, it's approximate. There's no actual cost. And also you're talking about the cost, uh, this cost over many years as reflected in the current water budget. So I mean, it's pretty vague. And again, you know, we don't, I don't feel comfortable voting for this much money without residents engagements.
Okay, next we have Councilman Muscat.
Uh, again, I'm gonna, I, I know as long as it's sixteen million, three hundred thousand dollars, um, because that's what's on the paper. If that, if this is what we're going to be voting on, uh, I'm okay with it. I just don't want it to come back saying, well, it was for the, you know, the, the thirty million that, uh, we were talking about. So it's sixteen million, three hundred is what we're going to vote on. Am I correct?
What's it for?
Did anybody answer that?
It says approximate.
Well, yeah, but approximate is not thirty million dollars.
No, what, what we, what we need to do, and I'll bring it up at the next meeting, is Bond Council is not part of this meeting, but Bond Council get very conservative. So they'll jump it up a little bit higher than sixteen million, three. But my intent was that with the ongoing of L forty-three and having to do forty-one and forty-two that we bond for that. I apologize for the eight hundred thousand. I stood corrected. I appreciate John, uh, saying that. But what, what you would be voting on is a notice of intent. So you're not issuing bonds right now. They're not making, all you're doing is, is doing a notice of intent, but it has to be specific to the language. And I would defer to Mr. Miatki. I don't have that here and I'm at home, not in the office. So I don't have a copy of that last.
I think that's a pretty good explanation on what's going on here. And if it's an attempt, I'm good, I'm good with it. Thank you.
Good.
Okay, next we have Councilman Coniston.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Yeah, I don't hear anyone saying that as far as the improvements to the sewer system that are mandated, that we shouldn't do them, they're required. The issue is how we're going to pay for them. And if we don't bond, if we upped our water rates four hundred percent, it would be a disaster. If we had a town hall meeting, I would think generally, uh, number one, we'd be the first city that has a town hall meeting about issuing municipal bonds. And number two, the residents will just hear, oh, you know, we're going to be spending money to improve our sewers. People are going to say, oh, you know, we should be doing, we should have volunteers, we should be doing it cheaper. But, um, uh, all I could say is better late than never. But this is obviously an expense we have to bond out for. And it's a, it's a fairly long, complicated process. And, and as has been indicated, it's not, we're not voting to issue the bonds. We're voting to start the process and go through the legal requirements that have to be done. Otherwise, it, we have to say we're not doing the work.
Okay, next we have Councilwoman Abdullah.
I have a couple of different questions. Um, the first question, because of the COVID situation right now and a lot of people either out of work or making less money or their businesses not making the same amount of money. Personally, I'd rather delay, uh, any type of charges to the residents as much as possible. So the first question I have, and I'm going to ask four different questions. I'm going to make them short. Is can this, and they're kind of interrelated. One of them is can this be delayed? The second question is, if we did not bond this out, can the city, you know, can we pay out of the money that we've got? And how much would that cost annually if we had no bond? The third question is, if we did bond it out, how much would cost would that be to the average resident? So based on average S C V's to equalize value and, and the mileage rate for that, and I'm sorry, the bond rate for that, how much would it cost the average resident? And the last thing is a comment that I want to make is I can tell you, based on my business, obviously the interest rates are unbelievably low right now. So that particular advantage, I see it, but at the same time, if this can be delayed and have our residents pay for this a little bit later, it would be to our advantage. So if somebody can answer the three questions, can it be delayed? How much cost would it cost to the city if we did not bond it? And what would the average homeowner pay for this type of a bond if we bonded it today?
Now, we have Director Salome's head at home. Hand up. Go ahead, please.
Yep, I can answer the first one anyways. So on June thirtieth, I sent an email to the Deputy Director of Eagle regarding the permits that this falls under. Uh, I told him, I asked him that the city is planning and is in the planning and financing process of the three Rouge outfalls. Uh, the city council is requesting something in writing from Eagle for these projects are mandated or part of the permit to make the city in compliance. He wrote back, will do. Let me talk with permit section and the district and respond. Yes, correction is required. Thanks. And I haven't seen, received everything, anything since. So I, I am proactively reaching out to them to see if there's, you know, a timeframe that we can push this down, you know, push it out a year or so. But I mean, it's not going to be something long term. It's, to your point, it would be something short term.
But even, but even for us short term director, at least it'll give people a little bit of a chance to, to get back into the norms of making whatever income, you know, most people had. I, I know people are struggling nowadays. I know there is unemployment that they pay and all that, but obviously it's ending at the end of this month. So I'd, I'd rather delay that. And then the second question was, how much would it cost the city if we went with this but did not bond it out?
Yeah.
Is that at all possible? How much would that be?
Yep. So I, I can't give you that number off the top of my head. We'd have to redo the model because when we did the model was with the twenty-six million in there. Uh, if you did it solely on the back of rates, it would be, it would be significant. But, um, my suggestion would, maybe we have another study session with Bond Council and with Plant Moran. We can, uh, lower that number and you can look at what it does to the rates, uh, with a bond and without a bond.
And does anybody know, based on the bond that, that's being proposed, how much the average resident, the average resident would pay extra per year in taxes?
Well, so it's not, so it's not a tax, right? So this is a, this is a utility.
Right.
Utility bond, right?
Right, right, right.
It's, it's repaid through, through the enterprise fund of, of water. But again, you know, last time we're talking about twenty-nine, now we're talking about sixteen. So I don't have an answer for you, but a study session, or I can definitely reach out to Plant Moran and get you an answer.
So I'm going to tell you personally, I'd like to kick this out to a, a study session. I, I'm not ready to vote on this, or else I'm going to vote no right now.
And I, I would like to at least get, uh, something, uh, better response back from Eagle, um, regarding this matter. So that way, that would make the council a little bit more comfortable also stating that, you know, here, because I know a couple of council people have said, but we don't have anything in writing. But this permit has been negotiated over years and Dan Brooks has more history with this than obviously than I do in this community. But, um, in another community, they had the same challenges and were part of these types of permits. So, but proactively I did reach out to him, uh, June thirtieth. So I'm still waiting for further response.
If, if, if I might, uh, recommend, I, I felt an obligation to bring this back because the water rates would be just staggering. And as a rate payer myself, I would not want my rates to go up a hundred or two hundred percent. Uh, what I would suggest, if you want to refer this back to me and if the council chair will give us a date on when we can have a committee of the whole meeting, we'll bring back, uh, Plant Moran, uh, Dan Brooks from Weyden Trim and Bond Council and talk about this again.
Council Chair.
I would like to do that.
The council chair?
Yes.
We're, again, I raised a big stink about this, but the fact of the matter is, is, is it was explained that this is the intent to bond. We're not bonding anything. So if we're just going to have an intent to bond, I think we should be able to go vote for that intent of bonding and still have the study session. Would that be correct, Mr. Mayor?
Do, do, as long as you pass the motion as Bond Council, uh, wrote it up and you have to change the amount because he put in like thirty million. And, uh, that would not be the correct amount. But this is very legalese and, uh, I don't know what Gary Miatki, what would you suggest, Gary?
Gary has to be unmuted.
Yes, George, are you unmuting him?
Yep, I'm getting him.
Yes, I would suggest that the matter be referred back to the administration scheduled for a, a, a study session or a committee of the whole meeting in order to make sure that all of the information is clear before there would end up being a vote. That would be my recommendation.
Okay, let's go ahead and do that. So do you want to amend your?
Mr. Abdallah, Councilman Abdallah is going to.
Yeah, it was Councilman Abdallah.
Yes. Out, can you hear me? Yep. Okay, I'd like to amend my motion that we move item eight B to a study session.
Support. Support.
All those in favor say aye.
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 Those opposed? If we move to a study session, I will get the council chair and we'll figure it out when we can do this.
Madam Chair.
Councilwoman Hicks Clayton.
The mayor asked that it be referred back to the administration as well. Is that a separate motion or included in that motion?
Was that included in that, Councilman?
Can we amend what? There's some noise.
The mayor asked that it be referred back to the administration as well as the study session. So that was. So that wasn't included in the motion, but?
So I'd like to, okay, so I'd like to amend the motion to be, uh, moved to a study session and move it back to the administration.
Can I support that?
I have right now, Councilman, what's your, uh, hand raised?
Yeah, I, I, I just wanted to say that, you know, I'm pretty disturbed about the fact that we were going to vote, and there were some people who were actually ready to vote on something that we don't even know. Yeah, I know we're recommending it, suggesting it, the amount was spent, what's, what's going to be spent, the, uh, what's, what's gonna be spent on. It, it was ridiculous that we even had this discussion with all these figures being thrown around and counteraddicted. I was, I was really, I was really dismayed. I, I almost walked out of the room because there was maybe eight hundred thousand, nine hundred thousand, doing this, doing that. And then, okay, let's vote on it. I was really upset about that.
I, I do believe that we settled that, so.
Yeah, I know, but.
This meeting's going so long, let's try and shorten our comments and, okay, but I get, I agree. Go ahead, please. Um, we're gonna be referring it back to administration. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? There you go. Okay, next item on the agenda is veto of motion of proven resolution of the Dearborn Heights Council related to initiation of financial review. At this time, I'd like to ask the next clerk, would you please read the charges?
Section seven thirteen, veto by mayor. The mayor shall have the power of the veto of resolutions and ordinances passed by the council. Provided that the said veto with the mayor's reason written writing must be filed with the city clerk at least twenty-four hours before the date of the next regular meeting of the council, at which said meeting, the clerks out present such veto or vetoes to the council. The council may only at said meeting reconsider the vote at which such proceedings were passed and adopted. And if so elects, may only at said meeting re-adopt such proceedings by a five-seventh vote of all the members elected, in which event the veto shall be overridden, and it will bar the right of the mayor from future vetoes of the proposed legislation. Such proceedings will then become effective on the following day, succeeding such meeting of the council, and ordinances so passed shall become effective immediately thereafter upon publication. No ordinance, resolution, or other proceedings shall be published until the meeting, following the meeting, at which said ordinance, resolution, or proceeding was adopted.
Okay, at this time, I'd like to reintroduce, um, the possible reconsideration of approved motion twenty-two oh eight resolution of the Dearborn Heights Council to initiate financial review. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oh wait, is there gonna be a discussion?
We need to not discuss on a override on a veto.
Don't we have to make a motion on that, though?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
You need a motion.
I need so much motion, sorry.
Council Chair?
Councilman Muscat.
I move council, uh, reintroduce, uh, re- reconsideration of a, approved motion twenty-two oh eight resolution of the Dearborn Heights City Council to initiate a final, uh, financial review as outlined in nine A.
Support.
For the Councilman Bazey, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Those opposed?
No.
Okay, we're gonna have to take a roll call then. Um, at this time, I'm gonna ask Councilman Coniston, how are you voting?
Uh, no.
Councilman Bazey, how are you voting?
Yes.
Councilman Muscat, how are you voting?
Yes.
Councilwoman Hicks Clayton, how are you voting?
Yes.
Um, Councilman Wenzel, how are you voting?
Yes.
Councilman Adella, how are you voting?
No.
And Melanowski Maxwell is yes. We have overridden the veto. That's correct, Mr. Clerk?
Oh, gosh.
Yes.
I'm sorry, Madam Chair, I did not hear what you said.
Okay, is that you've overridden veto?
Yes.
Yes, we have record of that.
Okay, at this time, I'd like to say on Thursday, June eleventh, twenty twenty, the Michigan Department of Appeals in favor of Dearborn Heights City Council in its writ of mandamus lawsuit against Mayor Dan Plucko. The Court of Appeals affirmed the prior rulings of the Honorable Judge Muriel Hughes that Mayor Plucko failed to fulfill the duties of his office by refusing to sign the engagement letter with the law firm Ottenwest, Toewill, and Shank PLC in pursuit of the council's financial review of city affairs. The Court of Appeals agreed with the city council that they had a clear legal right to hire Ottenwest Firm to assist with the financial investigation, and that the mayor had a clear legal duty to sign the retainer agreement with the Ottenwest Firm after the council overrode the mayor's veto. The Court of Appeals also found that Mayor Plucko wasted the city council's time and resources as well as causing unnecessary drain on judicial resources by pursuing the appeal. That is all in your opinion. Despite losing in the court on an appeal, the mayor continued to delay a lawful investigation by issuing a veto on a unanimous council resolution to proceed with the investigation. In that statement, the mayor reiterated his old argument, the mayor's veto statement is actually inaccurate about several items including but not limited to the unsupported and false claims that the attorneys have been present for all interviews conducted so far. When attorney Shank was only, has only attended one such interview, and that was with the outgoing treasurer prior to his retirement. And his dishonest arguments about the two fifty, two hundred fifty dollars an hour billable rate for council attorneys when Mayor Plucko signed an agreement with two forms that present him at rates of six hundred dollars per hour. And the mayor's flawed and continued insistence that financial review is unnecessary because the city books are, are audited by Plant Moran when the mayor should certainly understand that these folks of service are entirely different. The mayor and attorney Miyaki's unsupported and false claims that the assignment agreement was not provided to the city of Dearborn Heights Council, as well as the false claim that the Ottenwest Firm has been dissolved. And the mayor refusing to recognize that cooperative purchase agreements such as Mon Deal are standard practice for most municipalities in the state of Michigan. Mayor Plucko is dangerously close to malfeasance in office by boarding a resolution to, by vetoing a resolution to implement a contract that has been lawfully approved by the city and blessed by the courts. It is dis- it's deeply disturbing that attorney Gary Miyaki has assisted in drafting the veto for Mayor Plucko. The contract and, and the investigation are legal. The city's attorney is supposed to represent the city, yet he is charged in the city for time to provide the mayor with political power. If his legal advice had been better from the beginning, we all would have saved a lot of money. At this point, I will move on to the next agenda item. This is item nine B. It's the City of Dearborn Heights proposed sanitation renewal. This is for City of Dearborn Heights proposed sanitation renewal. Do I?
Chair?
Councilman Adella?
I move that we concur, doesn't say we're concur, are we just, uh, norm file there? Oh, I'm sorry. I move that we concur with Mayor Dan Plucko, uh, for the City of Dearborn Heights proposed sanitation mileage renewal. And the City of Dearborn Heights should be authorized to new, renew the levy previously approved under section ten da- I'm sorry, period one of the city charter of up two point nine five four zero of one mil for ten years commencing on two thousand twenty-one. And this is, is outlined in item nine B.
Support.
For the Councilman Coniston, is there any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
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 The ayes have it. Next, we have DPW Director Sellme. This is bidding specifications and bidding assistance roofing technology.
And Chair?
Councilman Adella?
I move that we concur with Public Works Director John Sellme. Um, the Department of Public Works is requesting approval to engage the professional services of Roofing Technology Associates Limited. RTA will assist the city with the roofing specifications and bidding documents for the replacement of the roof at the city hall. The proposal cost is eight thousand six hundred dollars and is budgeted in the city building and maintenance department capital outlay, and also the authorized payment as outlined in item nine C.
Support.
For the Councilman Coniston, is there any discussion?
Madam Chair?
Councilman Adella?
I, I think, uh, Councilman Bazey's first, go ahead.
Okay, Councilman Bazey?
Well, you made the motion, so you can go first.
Yeah, that's why.
Okay. So, so I had a, I had a question for, thank you, Councilman. So I had a question for Director Sellme. I, I have a very serious problem, and maybe clarify for me. But if we're gonna go out for bids for a roofing contractor to do the roof on the city, you know, at, at city hall, eight thousand six hundred dollars for somebody to do the bidding for us, uh, you know, just logically, I have a problem with that. If we had it out for bids to replace the roof, and obviously, whoever is replacing roof company A, B, or C would also have the specifications. I just, I, I, in my mind at least, I can't clarify why we need to pay an additional eight thousand six hundred dollars for a company to do the bidding for us. Can, can you clarify that for me, please?
Well, to, yeah, to the best of my, uh, ability. So the, not just the bidding, more the specifications than the bidding package, right? So that's, uh, nineteen eighty-eight down there. There's.
Wait, you, you gotta cut off, uh, Director, if you don't mind repeating that again?
It seems to be, the iPhone Tom seems to be wrong.
Mute yourself if you're gonna make noise.
All right, can you hear me now?
Yeah, much better.
Okay, so as far as the technical part of that, that's not, that's beyond my, my scope. The, the roof, I'm told, has three layers on there. It needs to be stripped down to the deck. The specifications come in as the type of material, the warranties, um, the workmanship. Uh, I reached out to Way Trim. They didn't have anybody in house that could do that kind of work. Um, and this is how we found this company. This is what they do. They assist a lot of commercial businesses in developing the specifications to go out to bid. Um, you know, I can put a bid spec together and, you know, and for, it comes in and the roof leaks in a year because of my, uh, inability to know exactly what type of material and how to install it and warranties and stuff like that. I, I mean, I would suggest this is like an insurance policy, but, I mean, this is a recommendation to the council, and the council can do, you know. What they choose.
But, and, and ignore my ignorance on this. I'm just thinking logically here, and I know.
Understood.
I know a home is much easier, obviously.
Yeah.
But if I was getting companies to do concrete or roof or add a garage or whatever it is, I mean, I get three, four, five, six, whatever it is, different bids, and I take a look at them, and I just see which one jives best. Maybe in this particular case, maybe if you get four or five bids, you control it to Plant Moran, and maybe at a much cheaper cost, we can make a determination, or maybe you could use the previous company that you used in the past. It just seems like a lot of money for somebody to help us out with this part. I, I honestly, I'm not, I'm not understanding it.
Yep, so, well, I did reach out to the company that did a couple of other city buildings, and it's about three hundred and fifty thousand dollars. My thought was the coun- the council would be a little bit uncomfortable with me coming there and say, I want to award a contract for three hundred and fifty thousand dollars to this contractor to do the roof. But if that's the direction of the council, I will, I'll, I'll gladly do that. I mean, I'm just trying to follow the charter and do the things the right way, and, um, in all honesty and transparency here, I'm not a commercial roof expert by any means, and so I was looking for some assistance, and this is something that we spoke about in the budget hearings. And so trying to move this forward, you know, obviously, we're into July, um, you know, before we know it's gonna be October, November, before we, you know, like to get a roof on before the end of the year. But certainly, I'll take some, you know, uh, advice from council and do whatever it is that they prefer me to do.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, next we have Councilman Bazey.
Okay, so this is, uh, again, you know, I have the same issue with, uh, with the eighty-six hundred. Uh, I saw an email a few weeks ago. I can't remember. I was trying to look for it, uh, earlier. Um, I, I mean, I, I know, I know we have it. It was addressed to all the council, and also, it was directed at the director, Mr. Sellme, that this company was gonna, that they, they were gonna come and do the same thing for free. So they were gonna give us, uh, the same service, uh, for free, but there were, I've never seen any email traffic that was replied to all the council, including the, the person that who sent that email. So what, what was the outcome of that, uh, email, Mr. Sellme?
I personally don't recall seeing that email, but I could have, but, um, I, I think, uh, if I recall the one you were talking about, they were interested in bidding on the project is what they said. Um, I'm sure I have it somewhere. I mean, if you guys don't want me to do this, I'm okay with that, and I'll go knock on three doors and bring three vendors in. My concern is, though, who, I'm, I'm not the expert on type of roofing and how that, how that is installed, how is, how, how the three roofs are removed down to the decking to assure that this roof has a thirty-year lifespan, you know? I'm, I'm open for suggestions. I'm, I'm, I'm not here to, to work for this guy or anybody. I'm just trying to do the right thing for the, for the taxpayers, so. Uh, whatever your direction is, I'll be glad to do.
I, I would, I mean, I would recommend going back to that company who actually, it, it did say that they want to come and do an inspection of the roof. Free.
So, so, so I'd have the company that has done two other city buildings for three hundred and fifty thousand dollars was his estimate. Would the council be comfortable with me just coming to, to the council and say, okay, go ahead, and I want you to approve this guy for three fifty? And then every, a lot of the things that we do here, the council wants them to be bid out, so I'm trying to bid it out. So I'm getting a little contradiction here, so I just need some direction.
Okay, thank you. Okay, Councilman Muscat, I already had you written down. You can sit and hand up again.
Yes, uh, thank you, Council Chair.
Go ahead.
Uh, to, to, to everybody involved, uh, replacing a roof on a commercial building is far, far different than replacing a, a roof on a home. Uh, commercial and home are two different things. I, I believe city hall has a metal decking, which could be rotted out. Uh, I think the eighty-six hundred dollars would be wise to spend for a complete inspection and give the, uh, Director Sellme some idea of what he's really dealing with. Uh, he doesn't know, I don't know, until you can really, ready to get in there and dig and find out. Um, to me, the eighty-six hundred dollars, to me, is a good insurance policy of knowing exactly what you gotta do, and that's a very old building anyway, uh, and, uh, eighty-six hundred dollars is cheap. To, and, and I really, uh, want my colleagues to, to really consider approving that eighty-six hundred dollars.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Okay, at this time, we will take a vote. I need all on council members unmuted. I, I'm getting Councilman Wenzel right now. Okay. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Those opposed?
No.
Okay, we need to take a roll call. Councilman Muscat?
Yes.
Councilman Bazey?
No.
Councilwoman Hicks Clayton?
Yes.
Councilman Adella?
No.
Councilman Coniston?
Yes.
Councilman Wenzel?
Yes.
Melanowski Maxwell, yes. It passes. Next item on the agenda is DPW Director Sellme, Johnson Controls Service Agreement.
Madam Chair?
Yes. Councilman Coniston?
I move that, just for discussion, that we concur with, uh, DPW Director John Sellme and have the mayor and clerk sign, uh, the service agreement with Johnson Controls for HVAC service for city hall, uh, and the attached city buildings, uh, as outlined in nine D. Uh, the service contract for a year will be fifty-seven thousand, one hundred and twenty dollars as outlined in nine D. Support.
For the Councilman Muscat, is there any discussion?
Yes, Madam Chair.
Councilman Coniston?
So, John, is this, um, if, if we have a problem, we call them air balancing, all that included, and, and why, why is it so much?
It's, it's based on, it's based on hours. Um, you buy so many hours within the contract. Um, and it's actually discounted at twenty-seven percent, and it's off the Sourcewell bid projects, and it's, uh, a hundred dollars more than what we paid last year.
And does a, does a qualified person come out that knows what they're doing, or is it, uh, uh, just a tech?
No, no, so they're qualified people, the, the same company that's worked with the city for, uh, at least ten to fifteen years, as I'm told. So they're very familiar with the systems, the operations, um, so it's not like, you know, it's not a apprentice program.
Yeah, I mean, we had a lot of problems with Johnson Controls at the Justice Center, but that was shortly after the building was built. All right, thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other questions directly related to this agenda item? All those in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. Those opposed? The ayes have it. Next, we have DPW Director Sellme, two thousand nineteen Street paving program, Lewis Manor subdivision paving. Change order number three, approval and certificate for payment number four. Madam Chair?
I move council approve and, and, and concur with, uh, Director Sellme on a two nineteen, uh, twenty nineteen street paving program, Lewis Manor subdivision pain, paving. Change order number three, approval and certificate for payment number four as outlined in nine E.
Support.
Or?
For the Councilwoman Hicks. For by Councilwoman Hicks Clayton, is there any discussion?
No.
All those in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it. Next item on the agenda, DPW Director Sellme, building maintenance equipment purchase and payment for two Ford F-150 Ford F-250 four-by-four pickup trucks.
Council Chair.
Councilman Muscat?
I move council approve the building maintenance equipment purchase and payment of two twenty-twenty Ford F-250 four-by-four as outlined in nine F.
Support.
For the Councilman Coniston, is there any discussion?
Madam Chair.
Chair.
And then I've got Councilman Josie.
I'm sorry, who was the first?
Councilman Abdullah and then.
Okay. This is for Director Sellme. I mean, could you give us a little bit more information as to why we need these right now? What's happened to put you in a situation where we need to pick up trucks?
Well, these are pickup trucks, so sure. So, these are budgeted items in the current budget. They will replace a two thousand five F-150 that, you know, is in dire need of repair. We're throwing bad money after bad money. And the second one would replace a two thousand ten pickup.
How much roughly mileage is there on each one, especially the two thousand ten?
Ten's got seventy, seventy-five thousand miles, the other one's got a hundred and seventeen thousand miles.
So, for the one at seventy-five thousand miles, I'm just trying to get an understanding of this. Is that, I mean, it's a lot of miles, but for normal everyday cars, it's fine. I'm just wondering for this type of stuff.
Yeah.
Is that?
And the difference also being that those are one-fifties, they don't have plows. They, they, they're basically, I don't know, lack of a better word, just, you know, plain old pickup. The boxes are rusted out on them, some of the floorboards are rusted out of them. You know, to, to, to be more effective and efficient is my recommendation that we pick, purchase the two-fifties. They come with plows, they come with bedliners. They're now more of a work truck than a one-fifty, which is basically, we can't even put a plow on a one-fifty.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
You have come through.
Actually, I was gonna answer the same questions, what are those trucks for? So, that was answered, thank you.
You're welcome. Councilman Muscat?
Yeah, you know, just to reiterate what Deputy, or the Director Sellme said. You know, seventy-seven thousand miles on a F-150 pickup truck, if I was driving it, it's not even broken in yet. You put that same mileage on a pickup truck that DPW uses, you might as well say it's got three hundred thousand miles on it. So, you know, the way the vehicles are used, we've gotta take in consideration.
Okay, thank you. Councilman Wenzel?
Yeah, John, could you clarify, you say they come with plows or plow?
Yeah, yeah. So, they come completely outfitted, they come with plow package, four-wheel drive, come with a utility light package on there for safety, it's got the, all the amber lights, bedliners.
Actual plows?
Sorry, sir?
Actual plows on them?
Yep, completely outfitted, trinket.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Okay, let's take a vote, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. Next, we have DPW Director Sellme, highway equipment purchase and payment. Oh wait, this is again, okay, is this a separate one?
Yeah, this is for highway.
I got you, I just realized, okay. DPW Director Sellme, highway equipment purchase and payment for two twenty-twenty F-250 four-by-four pickup trucks.
Council Chair.
Councilman Muscat?
Again, I move council concur with Director Sellme on the purchase of two twenty-twenty Ford F-250 four-by-fours for the highway equipment as outlined in nine G. And the same settlements go about this trucks as the other ones.
Okay.
Support. Support.
Support by Councilman Coniston, is there any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
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 Those opposed? The ayes have it. Next, we have Fire Chief Brogan, oh wait, wait, I'm sorry, no, this is another one, okay.
One more.
Director Sellme, highway equipment purchase and payment for twenty-twenty freightliner chassis and buildout.
Madam Chair.
Councilman Abella?
I move that we concur with John Sellme, Director of Public Works, requesting a purchase and to authorize the payment upon receipt of the two thousand twenty freightliner, single axle chassis from Wolverine Freightliner in an amount of eighty-six thousand six hundred and eighty-five. And that's for the truck and trailer specialties for the buildout of this dump truck and underbody scraper in an amount of eighty-four thousand eight hundred and thirty-five. The total amount for this vehicle is a hundred and seventy-one thousand five hundred and twenty. And this is as outlined in item nine H.
Support.
Support.
Support, I'm sorry, who supported this?
Support.
Support by Councilman Muscat. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
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 Those opposed? The ayes have it.
Thank you.
We have Fire Chief.
Welcome.
Permission to pay Western Wayne County Fire Department Mutual Aid Association.
Madam Chair.
Councilwoman Hicks Clayton?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Move to concur with Fire Chief David Brogan and pay the membership dues for Western Wayne County Fire Department Mutual Aid Association. Total amount is twelve thousand two hundred and forty-four dollars. Eleven thousand will come from dues membership and the remaining one thousand two hundred and forty-four dollars will come from training as outlined in nine I.
Support.
Support by Councilwoman Abdullah, is there any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. Next, we have Library Director McCaffrey, request to purchase vehicle.
Council Chair.
Councilman Muscat?
I move that City Council concur with Library Director McCaffrey, request to purchase vehicle as outlined in nine J.
Support.
For by Councilwoman Hicks Clayton, is there any discussion?
Madam Chair.
Um, Councilman Abdullah?
Um, I have a question for the Director. Be it that you're doing this because of the COVID situation, and I understand, I think, I think it's a good initiative. But I'm just curious, because of the fact that this would probably, and I hope so, obviously nobody can predict the future, but based on everything we're seeing with COVID and the vaccines, et cetera, et cetera, is it not maybe a better idea to buy used trucks since this is gonna be more of a temporary situation? Whether it's six month, nine month, or maybe even a year? Just based on the predictions about COVID? Instead of buying a brand new one at this point? I don't know if he, I presume he's here.
Mr. McCaffrey, I'm sorry. Oh, let me unmute you, hold on. Go ahead.
Hello. So, actually, the reason that I'd set the price at, at what I did at thirty thousand is so I could investigate that exact possibility. But even, even beyond that, we're planning to sort of change our service model a bit to even extend beyond COVID for a little while. One of the things that COVID has helped us do is innovate, try new things, add more of a delivery model to our overall service approach. In addition to not just, you know, delivering to households, we were doing something with schools and having initiative to deliver to them. And as I'd mentioned at the budget hearing, you know, our, our existing model where, you know, an individual's car can get used for small trips, you know, a meeting or two, you know, a little pickup from a store, that's okay for an individual. But more and more, it's, our insurance company does not recommend that library employees use their own vehicles all the time. And, but yeah, in terms of what we're looking to do, I'm gonna try to find the best vehicle I can for the dollar amount given. At thirty thousand or less, we should get a pretty decent vehicle, pretty decent mileage, and we'll try to do the best we can. I cannot definitely say it will be used or new, but I'm gonna try to get the best value for the dollar based on that. But I am going to explore that possibility.
Thank you.
Any further discussion?
Council Chair.
Councilman Muscat?
Uh, you know, can, can we do something like the ordinance department did, is put out the lease of that vehicle? And so the maintenance cost and all of that related is, is taken care of? I, I'm not, I'm not against you purchasing one, I just try to figure out if that would be a good way to go also.
I had looked into doing that. In terms of getting a lease, if the cost to me seemed kind of high for the vehicles we were looking at.
Okay.
I mean, that could be very different than ordinance. So, it seemed that when you extrapolated out the value of the lease as opposed to the actual value of the vehicle, it didn't seem to quite be as good a deal for the vehicles we were looking to get in terms of a transit. But, you know, again, I'm willing to research that possibility as well and maybe revisit it. But when I was looking at this, and I was looking at this many months ago, before COVID had hit, it didn't seem to be the best option at that particular time to lease based on what we were doing. And again, our situation's very different than what ordinance is doing in other departments. The vehicle we were looking at, the lease didn't seem to, uh, didn't seem to work out in terms of actual cost, if that makes sense.
That's good to know, thank you very much.
Also too, I've got a question, do we have any extra vehicles in the city that are not used? That were used in the past that are sitting there that we could possibly use? Have you checked into that?
How to transit?
Well, in terms of, in terms of, when I'd written in the letter, we've had researched this in terms of what vehicles we could use. And there was always something missing. For instance, we want two people to be able to be in the vehicle for delivery reasons. So, we want a passenger seat. Some vehicles didn't have a passenger seat. Some vehicles needed a large cargo, we needed a large cargo capacity because we're putting crates of books in this particular vehicle, which is gonna have a lot of weight. So, that vehicle has to be able to handle a lot of weight. Some vehicles didn't qualify for that. Some needed some kind of a, I keep forgetting what it's called, the metal shield you put to make sure the thing, the books don't slide up and hit the driver. That needs to be, make sure, make sure that that's in the vehicle. We want to make sure it's got a number of different things in it that work. And we also want some degree of quality. I mean, we don't want to get a vehicle from, you know, that's just gonna break down on us too quickly because we're gonna try to implement a model of regular service in terms of doing it. But yeah, in either case, we did look at vehicles in the city pool. And it just, they didn't know, none of them really met the qualifications that we needed to accomplish the task in question easily.
No problem, I understand.
Okay.
The idea.
I appreciate it, and yes, we were looking at that.
Okay, any further discussion?
Madam Chair. Thank you, Madam Chair. I just want to express appreciation and gratitude toward Library Director Michael McCaffrey and his crew, his staff. They've done a phenomenal job during the COVID with providing a service to our residents, continued service, including the home delivery of all these craft kits and things to the families. And I think that's a great job, well done.
Well, thank you very much, I appreciate that, thank you.
At this time, let's take a vote, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it. Next, we have Police Chief Myers, request for payment to DSS Equator Service and Equipment for taping of police phone lines.
Madam Chair.
Councilman Muscat?
Uh, I move council approve the request for payment to DD, DSS Equator Service and Equipment for Taping of Police Phone Lines as outlined in nine K.
Support.
Support by Councilman Bazey, is there any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. Next item on the agenda is Police Chief Myers' acceptance of Department of Justice Bureau of Justice Fiscal Year 2020 Coronavirus Emergency Supplemental Funding Program.
Madam Chair.
Madam Chair.
Councilwoman Hicks Clayton?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I move to concur with Police Chief Mark Myers and accept the Department of Justice Bureau of Justice Fiscal Year 2020 Coronavirus Emergency Supplemental Funding Program Grant of fifty-five thousand three hundred and ninety-two dollars as outlined in nine eleven.
Support.
Support.
Support by Councilman Muscat, is there any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it. Next item on the agenda is Police Chief Myers, request to purchase and pay full face mask, CBRN, canister and filter and mask carry pouches.
Council Chair.
Councilman Abella?
I move that we concur with Police Chief Mark Myers requesting purchase and payment of the following, eighty MSA Millennium Full Mat, Full Face Masks, eighty MSA Millennium CBRN, canister filter and thirty-six Millennium Mask Carry Pouches. And this would be, the total amount for this equipment is fifty-five thousand three hundred and thirty-six, which will be paid from the BGA Coronavirus Emergency Supplemental Funding Grant as outlined in item nine M.
Support.
Support.
Support by Councilman Muscat, is there any discussion?
Council Chair.
Councilman Muscat?
I just wanna thank Police Chief Myers and Deputy Chief Voiles for their communications with me this past few weeks concerning a lot of the issues concerning coronavirus and other issues. I just wanna tip my cap to them and thank them very much for, for working with me. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
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 Those opposed? The ayes have it. Next item on the agenda is Deputy Police Chief request to pay indoor firing range cleaning maintenance work.
Council Chair.
Councilman Muscat?
I move council approve the request to purchase and pay indoor firing range cleaning maintenance work as outlined in nine N.
Support.
Support by Councilwoman Hicks, is there any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
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 Those opposed? The ayes have it. Next, we have Corporation Council Miyake Depositories for City Fund, Morgan Stanley.
Council Chair.
Councilman Muscat?
Uh, I move that we concur with, uh, Corporation Council Miyake for Depositories of City Funds as outlined in nine O.
Support.
Support by Councilwoman Hicks Clayton, is there any discussion?
Uh, Councilor Miyake has his hand raised.
Hold on, let me unmute you.
Councilman?
Okay, go ahead.
Okay, very good. Yeah, I was just going to want to confirm that the motion would adopt the exact language that's set forth in item nine O for the recommended motion.
Council Chair, then the motion is what Gary V. Hotkey just said, so I don't have to repeat it because I might mess it up anyway.
Okay, do I have a second again?
Yes, support the motion.
Order by Councilwoman Hicks Clayton again, any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? The ayes have it. Next, under ordinance resolution, we have Councilwoman Hicks Clayton, Resolution of the Gilbert Heights City Council to subpoena records from the comptroller.
Madam Chair.
Councilwoman Hicks Clayton?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I move the City Council adopt the resolution as presented in eleven A. This is subpoena records from the comptroller.
Support.
Support by Councilwoman Bazey, is there any discussion?
Council Chair. Madam Chair.
Hicks, since you made the motion, I'll let you go first.
Thank you, Madam Chair. You know, I want to be very clear about this. Contrary to what the mayor said, you know, it's very clear, the city charter, when you look at section six point one-three, the council can request financial records. That's to be provided to the council body as well as in section eight point seven. So, you know, this is, though that's regarding the comptroller. But I want the history to be known and on the record that I made every attempt to get this information for, and I'm, I know the difference between a year-end financial statement and a monthly expenditure revenue report. We get monthly expenditure revenue reports every single month, eleven months prior, plus the twelfth month, which is June. We've done this, in fact, since twenty-twelve, twenty-thirteen, when I first asked about these reports because I'm very familiar with these reports. Again, it's provided for in the charter. In fact, the mayor asked for a statement from the council, he would have released this information. And the statement he wanted is across the top of these reports, if you read it. I don't know if you can see it, I've got it right here, I'll read it for everybody. It clearly states, note, available balance budget used does not reflect amounts incurred. And we know what that means, this is not a year-end financial statement. We know that that will come with the Plant Moran audit information, okay? This is a record that the council has every right to. I'm just, I'm very sorry it's come to this, that we have to take a legal action to get a document that's provided for in the charter. And what I want to say is, you know, I know the mayor shared a quote, if I may please, I think she, or in this case, he, does protest too much, and that's William Shakespeare. Thank you.
Okay, next we have Councilman Muscat?
Um, I don't think, well, yeah, you know, I, I don't understand all of this. Year-end records, I don't know if comptroller Vance could just give us what we spent and what we took in on, just a month of June, regardless of it's year in and year out. I don't understand the difference between the two. So, I, I'm. So, uh, I, I'm confused at best, and I really don't know what I'm going to vote on here.
We have Councilman Coniston. Next.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just heard Councilwoman Clayton say she wanted the monthly report for June. The next-to-last paragraph of her resolution says that the Dearborn Heights City Council hereby subpoenas the comptroller and the mayor to produce reports of estimated and actual income for all budgetary accounts for the year through June 30th, 2020. So I, this says the whole year, not the, I'm not finished, Councilwoman.
All right.
This says the whole year, not, not the month of June.
Let's move on. We have Councilman Abdullah. Then we have, um, Councilor Vance. Go ahead, Councilman Abdullah.
Just, just want to state, uh, I, I'm going to tell you, personally, I've got a problem with how, how a lot of the, um, the stuff that happens on the council happens. It's totally unlike anything else I see in the outside world. I mean, I was always, you know, I was fighting back and forth, back and forth, bickering, and I'm just going to be blunt. Sometimes, you know, accusations or words are maybe are a little bit stronger than maybe I would use in a normal, at least business environment. You know, when you use the words like, you know, refuse to, and I'm sorry, Councilwoman, with all due respect, when I was looking at the different emails going back between you and the comptroller and, and different council people, there was not one time where she said, "I refuse to give it to you." She just said it would not be ready within that time period. Now, you could very well be right, Councilwoman, and I'm not saying you're wrong. And she could be right, or maybe she's wrong. But I didn't see anybody refuse to give it. Because the words refuse to give it implies that somebody's got it in their hands and they just don't want to give it to you. I didn't get that vibe or that feeling in any of the emails. And that's where I've got a problem sometimes with the verbs that's used on the council amongst all of us. It just takes us down to a road like here, this financial audit right now. Because of the budding hats, we spent probably 200, 300, who knows how many thousand dollars. I mean, I know the council chair, somebody mentioned a hundred thousand dollars, or actually our, our current treasurer, uh, Zohair Blahad. I think it's even more than that personally. And I did ask the comptroller, how much is it? I think it's more than that. But it's all because of the bickering, this back and forth, back and forth, and this causes this type of situation. So all I'm saying is, I don't know, just some sort of decorum, and I know those words used before, Councilwoman. And I'm not saying you're not using it. Maybe, and this is not meant against you specifically. I'm talking about as a whole. I don't believe the comptroller refused, honestly. I, I didn't see that.
Thank you. I've got comptroller Vance. Let me unmute you. Hold on. You need to review that, I think.
Okay, yes. So I just kind of want to further elaborate. I haven't prepared this report yet, so it's not that, it's, it's not there yet. Um, and I did confer with the previous comptroller. And this report has never been given to council prior to the audit for as many years back as the city can remember. I think it would not be, and it, it's not good to give out numbers that aren't accurate. As I explained in my emails, because I'm doing all the closing processes, and it's a long process, there's a lot of activity at the city. Um, these numbers are going to change daily. So to say the monthly financial for June, that number isn't going to be anything relative to what the audit has done because I have to do the accruals of the revenue and the accruals of the expenditures. And I'm working hard on that on a daily basis. So to me, giving you a report today, I don't want that out there in the public. The numbers aren't accurate. They're not proper. I, I don't want that being shared, whatever you want to say, because these aren't the actual true numbers. So to say to give it as of June 30th, I'm not done doing the entries as of June 30th. And that's why the year-end one is always given during the audit preparation. Because now, all my entries are done, the auditors have reviewed it, and, and on occasion, they make entries as well to make sure that these numbers are as best as possible before you present it. No one wants to hand out a piece of paper that is wrong and, and needs to be corrected. I don't want it distributed and people thinking that this is what our numbers are at. Um, and like I said, I'm not refusing to give it. It's just, it's, it's not customary, it's not best prac, practices in accounting to give numbers that aren't reflective of what actually is, is what the numbers are going to be. And I'm just asking for you guys to wait until the process is finished.
But at the same time, though, with due respect to comptroller, you got month number 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9, 10, 11. The 12th one is not automatically accumulation of all of them. There's the 12th, and it's on its own. And then there's the end part after the end of the month. So what the councilwoman is asking for is that one month, and I think it's fair to give it to her. I'm not saying it's not fair. I think it's fair to give it to her and us in general. And maybe there's a little bit of a delay, but I don't necessarily, we don't necessarily need to wait to accumulate the whole 12 month, even though it sounds like it's the same, but it's really not.
It is an accumulated report. So.
Well, that's the end of the year one.
No, I understand, but the report that you're asking, it is accumulated. They're, they're, all of them are accumulated. So when I give you, when I give you.
The numbers for the 12th month is by itself. It can be given by itself, the 12th month by itself.
Even if you asked for the activity of the 12th month, it's still not going to be active because i- 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 if you're just wanting the activity for June, then it's just going to show what, what expenses have hit that month. They're all accumulative. When you get July 1st, there's really not a whole lot of activity. And when you get August, it's July and August together. And when you get September, it's July, August. So there's no way of not making it cumulative. So it would be a wrong assumption by looking at it. If you looked at it and just compared revenues as of this minute and expenditures as of this minute, it's, it, their numbers aren't going to be right. It could reflect that one is higher than the other. And, and, and two days later, it's the other way. Do you know what I'm saying? So it, it's not a good portrayal of what's going on because of all the adjustments that are done at year-end. And the, the mayor is raising his hand. He'd like to speak.
Councilwoman Muscat, and then Councilwoman Muscat, and then the mayor. Go ahead, Councilwoman Muscat.
Yeah, regardless of what these, uh, these documents contain or how accurate they are, we have the right to see these documents. And I back, uh, Councilwoman Hicks on this. Regardless of what they contain and what they mean, we have the right to access to them. Period.
Okay, we have Councilwoman Muscat.
Uh, comptroller Vance, uh, couldn't you just, if you gave a statement, and I mean any statement, couldn't you just put a disclaimer on, on the forum and say, "These numbers are not accurate, blah, blah, blah." And that way it covers whatever you're going to do in the future as far as the numbers changing. And that's like maybe self-protecting yourself for, for whatever reason. And I don't know if there would be a reason, but, uh, maybe that, that could solve the issue here. Um, I'm trying to figure out a, you know, somewhere straight down the middle here. Uh, is that possible?
I could do that, but I have another question then. If I give you numbers right now and you're looking at it, then what are you looking at if they're not accurate? What would you want the numbers for as a reference?
I agree.
Okay. I'm just saying.
Councilwoman Wenzel's next.
I already, I already made my statement.
Oh, you did?
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Okay, then I've got the mayor next.
First, I want to apologize for having gotten political, but I felt a great need to defend my department head, who I don't think is fairly coming under attack. It's impossible to have a year-end closing of the city records in five, let alone 20 days after a year-end. The comptroller's office is in the process of doing post-closing adjustments. These are very time-consuming, and in the case of revenue recognition, can't be completed for a governmental entity until 60 days after year-end. People with basic, uh, financial backgrounds know this. For the rest of the council, if you check with any CPA and ask them if it was reasonable that a city as large as Dearborn Heights would have its financial records all done in five or 20 days, they would tell you that is impossible. And I had talked to the council chair, and I thought we had come up with a compromise. And, uh, all of a sudden, this thing appears on the agenda and is very vicious and attacking all of us. And I, Mr. Councilman Abdullah hit it right. All you have to do is ask. We don't hide things from you people, even though you think we do. The concern we have is if, as comptroller Vance had indicated, if we provide you data when we know it's not correct, you have every right to come back a month or two and say that you gave us bad data. So what I had talked to the chair about is that each councilman that wanted to receive a preliminary report that you acknowledged this preliminary report is not correct. The numbers are going to change, and you're not going to disseminate the information because it's incorrect outside the community. And that's, and, and I thought that that was agreeable, and I, and she thought it was a good compromise. I, Linda was not in the office on Thursday, but we had this discussion late Thursday. I talked to Linda the first day she came back at the department head meeting at approximately 10 or 11 o'clock on Monday. And we were all set to proceed on that basis. Before we even got a chance to, I get a revised agenda with this resolution ripping everybody. And that's why I got mad. So you can understand why I got mad.
Thank you.
Madam Chair.
Councilwoman Hicks Clayton.
Thank you. Madam Chair, this is not ripping anybody. And that, talk about strong language. I mean, that actually contradicts what Councilman Abdullah had said, and I agree with Councilman Abdullah. We went through the process. I went through the channels. I asked for it. And yes, I didn't receive it. So maybe refuses is a strong word, but I've been civil with this the whole time. And I did not come out and attack somebody at the beginning and violate council policies. So we do have a motion on the floor, but nobody's gripping anybody. We have a right to the information.
All right. We have Councilman Coniston, and then we'll take a vote.
The, the resolution says that, that for the whole year, for all income and expenses for all budgetary accounts for the year, for the year through June 30th, 2020. I, I just heard the councilwoman say she wants just June. This, the resolution says for the year. She's asking for something that doesn't yet exist.
Okay, thank you, Councilman. At this time, let's take a vote. All those in favor say aye.
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 All those opposed?
No.
Okay, we're going to have to take a roll call. I have Councilwoman Muscat.
No.
Councilwoman Bazey.
Yes.
Councilwoman Hicks Clayton.
Yes.
Um, Councilman Abdullah.
No.
Councilwoman Wenzel.
Yes.
Councilman Coniston.
No.
Valdowski Maxwell is yes, who passed. All right. Next item on the agenda is new business license renewal for the St. Carl E. Post 2002 located at 23850 Military. We also have the Dearborn Heights Moose Lodge 27225 Warren and the Luskawa Post, the FW 7546 located at 6828 Waverly.
Council Chair.
Councilwoman Muscat.
Uh, can we take the, all these together?
Yes.
Uh, I, I move that council approve the business licenses for, um, all that are outlined in 13A.
Support.
Councilman Coniston, is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Close. The ayes have it. We are going to have comments from council members. Well, I'll ask you to limit it to three minutes because it went over so late. This has been a long.
Council Chair.
Yes, I have Councilman, um, Wenzel has his hand up. Go ahead, please. Councilwoman Muscat.
Yeah, um, first of all, I'd like to thank, uh, our local South End Neighborhood Watch Patrol, Frank Zach and his sidekick, Grant, who ate, uh, in the, with the police department, patrolling the, uh, businesses and homes and schools in the South End. They're doing a great job. And if anybody would like to help them out with gas cars or any kind of auto maintenance, please contact city, city council member. They're doing a great job. They're a great asset. They do it on their own. They spend their own money for everything. Two great guys, and they need to be applauded for that. Also, um, I was wondering if we, because of this COVID thing, and la, reduce our number of trips to city hall, if the, um, the mayor and the police chief could go back to having the police department deliver our packets to our homes, which was convenient for everyone. The police are out anyway and making unnecessary trips to city hall. And we know something's, uh, some, some positive, uh, results that happened at city hall recently. So it's, the limited, many trips possible to city hall would be a great thing. I'd, I'd appreciate it myself if I, I could save a trip uh, with all the things I've got going on. And also with this COVID, um, we've got a thing called the new normal. And I think one of our new normals in the city of Dearborn Heights should be the new normal of a five-day work week, city hall. And, uh, I would like all department heads to come up with a plan to return to a five-day work week in the next 30 days, present at this council chair, because it's something that we're, might not do, but we're going to do. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, uh, next I have Councilwoman Muscat. Go ahead, please.
Uh, Councilman, uh, Wenzel stole by thunder, so everything that he said.
Okay. Okay, now we have Councilman Bazey.
Okay, uh, I have two items. Uh, this was brought up a few months ago when we didn't renew the contract for the attorney. Uh, need to know the status. And I know it was mentioned with the COVID issue, but I know that a lot, every attorney is working right now. So I need, we need to know the status on, on that, getting a new attorney to represent the council, the city and the mayor.
Okay. The mayor is more on it here. Go.
There he is.
Hold on that. Go ahead, man.
Uh, during the COVID, I am not publicly meeting with people. I'm trying to, uh, I, I do most of my discussions over phone calls. So, uh, interviews for such a position or for department heads, I like to do them in person.
Councilman Bazey.
Well, well, we're handling official city business on Zoom. I don't know, we can do that, uh, through Zoom. Obviously, obviously, we're approving, uh, millions of dollars on Zoom meetings. So I don't know, we can't get a new, you know, have you interview a new attorney, you know, through Zoom.
Mayor.
I responded.
Okay, thank you. All right, next we have Councilman Coniston.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm glad to see city hall open and the signage up, particularly around the building department and the forums available. Uh, and thank you to our building director, Larry Dolmsky, for putting up all the uh, sneeze guards or whatever you call them, the glass, uh, great job and, and the signage. Um, I'm glad to see our parks open and, uh, hopefully our sporting programs will get back. Uh, uh, and we'll have some sporting activities for our youth. I know we're just going to start being able to see baseball games. Nobody in the stands, but baseball nonetheless, which I've missed. Um, regarding the bonding, I, I hope everyone understands, I've heard some of the council members say, "Well, we're spending all this money." That sewers are expensive. The sewer system that runs through Inkster, through Dearborn Heights, through Garden City, it's all really one sewer system. It doesn't change at the particular, uh, city border. It's, it's, uh, these are updates that are mandated. And, uh, uh, the only alternative is really is to go out and bond. And then again, regarding the, uh, this resolution to ask the comptroller to produce a year-end uh, financial documents when they're not ready, it, it just doesn't make any sense. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, um, any other council people, Councilwoman Abdullah?
Madam Chair, just want to make a statement that we had another meeting today. It was a closed meeting. And we've had, obviously, multiple conversations and calls in regards to the 5G situation. I know a lot of residents have had some concerns in regards to where a lot of these are popping up. Um, I just want to make a statement to residents that we are doing everything within our powers, and that's a key word, is within our powers. Unfortunately, uh, at the federal government level, the FCC specifically, they've given us practically almost no power. So I just want to assure you that every city council member, um, is doing everything they can within our powers. And again, that's a key word to, to have that.
And again, that's a key word to to have that either stopped halted or at least at the very minimal looked into. And this is one of the statements that the attorney allowed us to say is that the city has taken the action that is allowed under the state law. And they need state and federal, it needs to be worked on at the state and the federal level and most specifically the FCC. That's who's going to be able to make some of the changes that some of the residents are requesting. And it's very, very, very unfortunate that we have sadly and 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 madly almost no control over this. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Okay, hold on, we got the mayor here. Go, no. Hold on.
Okay, my.
Yes.
Yeah, I uh. Councilman Abdullah uh talked about something I want to briefly mention, but uh we did organize a meeting with the two congresswomen that service Dearborn Heights and with Rashida Tullib and uh with uh Debbie Dingle. And we did ask for their assistance and help in getting the federal legislation changed on the 5G so that the local control would come back. We have uh in planned a similar meeting with our state representatives and state senators to lobby them also to change the law, which appears to be uh the best way to get the local control back. The only other item, and please don't unmute me, but I think it was uh per the charter, I'm supposed to be permitted to speak on all matters that come before this council per the charter. And when you mute me, I I'm not able to. The other problem was you've talked for a long time on after my uh veto, but you didn't give me a chance. There's two sides to the story. And I think the public, I'm trying to protect the public's cost related to this. And secondly, uh, I never sued the council on this. The council sued me. And the first time you sued me and the council didn't even vote on it. So I think there's two sides. In all fairness, you should have allowed me to be speak.
Is there any further comment? At this time, I will open it up to public and community announcements. Oh, I've got um Hoot Meyers here. Hold on, let me unmute him. Go ahead.
Okay, Gary, you can hear me. A couple of things I want to touch on. First, thank you for um realizing how important those grants are. The fire Lisa Martin at the fire department wrote that BJA grant today. You could saw we use every penny of that grant. Looking over it real carefully, you notice I didn't buy enough pouches as I did gas masks. That's because uh the grant, that's all we could get for the grant. We are trying to accrue another grant with the help of Lisa Martin to pay for the rest of those pouches. So if you see another one for the same type of equipment, it's because we're trying to finish the purchase, but we are trying to secure grants. Director Hashem is probably going to talk in a little bit, I'm I'm assuming, but he's helped us get grants. The police department um is very appreciative of all that help and we're using it to provide better service to our customers, but also to protect our employees because we're running 24/7. Second thing is uh to make it as as quick and as and painless as possible, um masking up under the new governor's orders, the police department stance is this, it's advise, educate, and enforce. We are going to do our best when we get a call for service to advise the people of what the what the violation is, what the order is, then we're also going to try to educate them and help them come up with a solution, whether it's a business owner or something like that. It's ultimately up to them. And then enforce is the last option and enforce is if we've made those steps to try to advise and people still chose to do it, we will enforce with a ticket. The police department, like many, we are not actively pursuing people that aren't participating in this. We are responding to calls for service. It is, there's too much question to do that and too many opportunities or confrontations that could be involved. So we are responding to calls for service. We are advising, we are educating, and if that does not work, um, to cut down on our time, if we're spending all this time responding, we will at some point begin to enforce it as we track who we've talked to. But the first step will be to advise and advise and educate. So I hope that answers some of the questions. I had many come in. The governor was nice enough to put that out on a Friday to take effect on a Monday. So 7:00 AM, we were coming up with what our mission would be. And then uh the final thing is I want to say thank you about the um the study session today on dispatch. I do, I will let you know that I have asked the city of Dearborn to provide us with what a draft uh contract would look like so we can start reviewing it. And I know that council would like more talk on it, and I agree with that. But I also, this is something that cannot be kicked down, as you saw, by the numbers of both staffing and fiscally. And um I have planned on having corporate creation council review the contract and in the near future bring it to council to be on the agenda to be discussed and voted on. So out of, you know, so everyone knows that's where I stand and that is uh the steps I'm taking at this point.
Thank you very much. Okay, any further um public announcements? At this time, I will, I'm sorry, community announcement. At this time, I will open up to public announces. We have Gator that would like to see. Can we please unmute them?
Yep, I'm just looking for, there we go.
Can you do that? Wait, hold on. I got Director Hashem. You sure is a community announcement director? Hold on, still unmuting.
No, 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 it's just a personal comment that I have to make.
Okay, I'll I'll call you after Gator. I'll leave you unmuted, though.
Thank you.
Hi, everybody. I'll be quick. My name is Latanya Gator and I attended the city council meeting last month where I proposed maybe that we could um have a DEI committee. And I learned that we previously had a DCC Commission, Diversity Culture Commission, that was inactive since uh 2007. And I've been doing my due diligence and trying to see if this type of commission or committee would be beneficial to the community. And I have been getting some positive feedback that some community members do want this to happen in the city of Dearborn Heights. But again, I want to know from you guys on the call, if anybody was around back when the commission was originally founded, what were the pros and cons of what that commission did? And uh if you guys want to see that be reactivated, what could be some positive things that that commission could do now? If anybody's willing to speak on it.
I am listening wrong. Um, anybody?
I think Fitz has his hand up.
It doesn't look like any of us were around that then. Oh, we got Councilman Con.
Mr. Councilman Coniston has his hand waving.
Yes, yes, thank you, Madam Chair. So uh then Councilwoman Van Houten, Margaret Van Houten, there was an incident in the North End of Dearborn Heights involving uh some harassment of a African American resident, I believe, I want to say was a member of the Detroit Lions. And uh initiated by Councilwoman Margaret Van Houten and and joined by really all of us to have the diversity commission. And then there was a race going on for district court judge and some people on the council. There was an issue that we got caught up in whether it included uh LGBT type rights or not. But the commission was formed and met a few times. There was a um what a Wayne County Deputy Prosecutor uh who was African American. Her last name was Walker, was actually friends with Margaret Van Houten, who was active on the uh commission. I'll have to see if she still lives in Dearborn Heights, but it, like many of our commissions, just sort of uh faded out of operation, unfortunately.
Thank you, Mr. Coniston. Would you be able to speak to what could work for this commission now and would you feel the community will most benefit from?
Yeah, we have a, you know, uh requirements under the charter about forming commissions. And I think we just need to fill any of the vacant um uh any of the vacancies and then set a uh, you know, a meeting. And the group can elect a chair and so forth.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Again, I'm I'm, it'll be helpful to me or anyone else who could be appointed to the commission as to what what would we do and how could it be beneficial now in the current times?
Okay, next we have Director Hashem.
Yes, uh, good evening, Madam Chair. Good evening, Mr. Mayor. I have a personal comment. I'm speaking as an individual, obviously. My name is Joe Hashem. I live on Wilson Drive. First of all, I'd like to thank DPW because during the heat wave that we had in the last two weeks, they did a great job, not just only in my neighbor neighborhood, but all around the city, cutting trees and trimming them. And I know it was very difficult. It was very hot outside. So thank you very much, DPW. I'd like to uh thank the police department for the increased per increased patrols. I think I see a lot of cars, you know, driving around, which reduces people from leaving and doing some, you know, bad things uh when there's kids outside. Lastly, as an individual, I'd like to offer a little bit of advice. If you happen to drive on Wilson Drive, which is one of the most beautiful streets in the city of Dearborn Heights, and you see somebody parked illegally or parked in the wrong spot, do not take matters into your own hands. Just call the police. They are very fast. They're very quick and they know the law. Just call them and they will respond very quickly and they will address your need. That's all I have to say, ma'am. I wish everybody a good night and all be safe and thank you very much.
And um treasurer's in here, Abdul Haq.
Yes, thank you, uh, Madam Chair. I raised my hand a couple of times as treasurer because I wanted to give my opinion as a treasurer.
All right. I'm sorry, I get used to it, but there's a long reason to.
It's a long night.
One button, it's more obvious than waiting.
I know. I know. First, I would like to ask all our residents to help the employees in the treasurer department especially. Please come and pay any bill you have with a check if possible. That help us, you know, uh, not to sit and count money for long, long time. And that help the girls really to do their job fast and on time. Second thing, you remember I always spoke about the PEG program and I always ask an opinion from uh from Mr. Mayatki to give me a written opinion if we can pay salaries from the PEG. And I'm asking him right now, in my capacity as treasurer, if you are able to write a veto in six, seven days, you are able to give me an answer by next meeting. And I ask you officially, please give me a written opinion whether we can pay salaries from the PEG or not. And I appreciate it. So we we can settle this issue. Thank you.
Thank you.
Council Chair, do you want me to address that?
Go ahead, I am muted, you.
Okay, um, I do not normally take direction from the uh city treasurer with regard to opinions. I will respond to his requests for assistance, always will. But if you direct me to do so, or the mayor directs me to do so, but I'll start with Mr. Neil Latos' opinion as a starting point because I believe he's already given an opinion on this and he has more expertise than I do. But if you want me to do it, then Council Chair, I will certainly end up doing it if you direct me to do so.
Okay, thank you.
Should I do it?
I'll think about that. I'll send you an email officially in regards to it.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Fine. I'm trying, trying.
Okay, am I muted? Gary, I I'd be more than happy to have you give that opinion. I authorize you to do it.
Okay, just shake your head. Okay, because I'm muting, it's not working too quick right now. It's slowing down. Okay, any.
I've got it. I'm good. I'll do.
Okay, you'll do it. Got, good. Okay, can you further question? We have a. Maha Ibrahim. Maha, where are you?
Hi.
Okay, go ahead.
Hi, uh, my name is Maha Ibrahim. I just wanted to bring uh an issue that I have to the attention of the council members and the mayor, uh, Mr. Gary. So it's about a dealer that I bought last year. It's something that I've been trying to, a business that I'm been trying to get up for about almost a year now. So it's a used car dealership that I bought back in uh October of last year. It's something that I looked for and I did a purchase agreement in September. I spent a month after that uh doing my due diligence at the city. It's a, it was a used car dealership, been there for years and years and years. So after I got the zoning approval from the building department, uh, I got all the paperwork, I got the CFO, I went and did the actual purchase in October. And after that, uh, I spent a couple of months just making sure, doing more remodeling and stuff like that to the dealer. Went back in uh March uh to get my license. And then uh, you know, I was told that there's a moratorium in place and then COVID-19 happened. Had to wait till June uh till I was able to go back and follow up with the city. I was told again that there's a moratorium in place for uh new uh used car dealerships. What I've been trying to uh argue for for a while now that uh this is not a new car dealership. It was an existing dealer. It's been there for for a long, long, long time, so I'm not trying to do any changes to the to the area or anything like that. And uh I think there was an issue uh because the prior owner failed to pay like a renewal license last year uh in March of 2019, which is like months and months before I bought the dealer. And this is something that was not brought up to my attention uh and and all that.
And the council meeting still call you in a minute.
Yeah, so um this is, this is, I think I'm I'm stuck in a very, very unfortunate situation where I bought the dealer and got all my approvals before that moratorium. But due to COVID-19 and all that, I had to apply for the light for the renewal of the license after the after uh 2020, which put me in this very, very unfortunate situation. So what what I'm asking for in my argument is that I I honestly should not and truly believe that this moratorium should shall not apply to me because, again, this is not a new car dealership and I'm not fully understanding why uh and why it's done like that. I'm trying, not trying to change any anything. And I just also want to, you know, I I talked to most of the city councilmen and been trying to go to the city for for almost like nine months now, back and forth. So most of you might have talked to me. I just want to want to reinforce that I fully respect the the moratorium that's in place now.
Ibrahim, you're getting, you're at three minutes.
Okay.
And I apologize, but we do limit it.
Okay.
Okay. At this time, I am going to call on Galaxy Note 9. I'm not sure who that would be.
Sure.
And again, you have three minutes limit. Oh, here it is. Okay, you got it. Well, Galaxy Note 9 doesn't have audio on, so we will go on to Chrissy. Where is Chrissy?
I got her. Oh, wait, did I just hear the Galaxy Note?
Nope, they aren't connecting.
Okay, sorry.
We're not going to delay here. We got, we went too late.
Hi, okay, I'm gonna talk really quick before my birds start talking. Um, I'm Chrissy Loy, I live on Charlesworth Street. I have two things. Um, so Latanya Gator, I am going to email you tomorrow because me and a couple of other department heads do have a lot of things that the commission could do. The commission was on started by a couple of people that were really active at the time, one of them being Hamed Swaden, who grew up and went to college. And unfortunately, we lost him for a couple of years. On we some ideas to to help out with neighborhoods and to get not only racial diversity, but understanding with people. So I will email you. I don't want you to think that on that some of us don't have some suggestions because I've got suggestions. Second thing, while my birds are going, and you can probably hear my dishwasher, on I am going to mute myself. It's really hard to hear counsel sometimes because on there's people talking and having conversations in the background and other people moaning and it's and I don't know who and I'm not blaming anybody on counsel, but it's really hard to hear you guys sometimes when the person has the floor if other people are talking, in addition to my birds and my dishwasher. So thank you very much and good night.
Okay, next we have Mr. Parrish. Hold on, you too. Go ahead.
Can you hear me?
Can you hear me?
Yep.
Hi, Dana Parrish from Remley Park, Dearborn Heights. Couple of things, Madam Chair, for you. We're buying lots of new equipment, vehicles in the city. I know lots of stuff is already approved through the budget. Kind of keep in mind that budgets, excuse me, that revenue sharing over the next year or so is going to be really tough. I'm sure the federal and state level is going to cut us really severely. And if we can cut anything back, things can be delayed because we don't know what's going to happen with revenue sharing over the next couple of years. I'm sure these trillions of dollars for bailout money is going to kill us in the city. The next thing is, on July 1st, I sent out a FOIA request, which was really promptly replied to. I've sent you, Madam Chair, a copy of that FOIA request. There's a problem, however, in the FOIA request, I requested full legal names. And in the reply, I got first and last names, almost no middle names. I've got perhaps some initials for names. So if I can get those corrected and get the full legal names, as I requested my FOIA email on July 1st. That was sent to Director Sabota Perry and it was sent to me by the mayor's chief of staff. And finally, on February 25th, I know this is going back ways, however, it was at the February 25th meeting. The mayor was asked about an ordinance truck parked at the Targets in another city on a Saturday night. The mayor responded that it was a 24/7 ordinance animal control director who had parked there. And he was, he had been taking a dog to the shelter and he got his clothing dirty from a sick dog. I have a couple of problems there. Number one, a dog was transported to the animal shelter in an unapproved pickup truck. First of all, when you transport an animal, you transport it in an animal transport vehicle, which I believe the city has two of. Number two, animals are to be transported by an animal control officer. Animal control officers are certified by the state of Michigan. That's through the Michigan Department of Agriculture and Rural Development. They have to attend 100 hours minimum training that's controlled under MCL 287.289C. Or the exception to that is a police officer or a person employed as an animal control officer prior to 1973. I'm sorry, sir, but Mr. McIntyre does not fit any of those descriptions. He is not certified under MDA. He is not a police officer and he was not employed as such prior to 1973. I have checked. Mr. Mayor, could you respond, please? Why an animal was transported in a vehicle that was not properly contained? And why you have a person acting as animal control officer who's not certified by the state?
Hold on a minute, I'm muted, can you get it, George?
Yep, I can. Get him. I got both of them.
Yeah, my battery is just about dead, so I'm trying to.
I can answer that, I can answer that. First of all, there was two of us that traveled to the shelter that night. I did go in my vehicle, I often do that when I'm assisting someone who may be on call that got called in. And so we never said that the animal is transported in my vehicle and if that was conveyed that way, it's incorrect. So, and by the way, the animal, and there were two animals and one of them was deceased and I could transport an animal if I needed to, a deceased animal in my vehicle. So, and then to answer your question, I actually saw an email that went around regarding your doubt of my certification. And apparently, when you called MDA, because I actually deal with Dr. Shal. Well, somebody called. So I don't know what name you asked for, but I definitely am certified. I went through the training along with all the other officers. When we, back in 2014, when it was decided that we were going to reopen the animal control department officially, it was my insistence that we, all the full-time ordinance officers and including myself, go through the training. So I am certified, I don't know what name you gave them, but I'm more than glad to have.
You go by?
I'm more than glad to have you come to the counter whenever you like.
How many names do you go by?
Excuse me, I'm talking.
Answer that question, how many names do you go by?
I go by one name. Most people, most people call me Jack, but my legal name is John, similar to John Kennedy who went by Jack Kennedy. So I'm, you know what, Mr. Parrish, you could have called me anytime. I'm insulted that you would assume that I'm not certified. And since that certification, all of my officers are doing continuing certification. I almost have my national certification in animal control and animal cruelty investigation. So again, I don't know where all this information is going about, but I'm going to speak to that when it's my turn to speak in a second.
Okay, at this time, I have Tina Brown. Can we find Tina Brown? I got her. There you go.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay. I'm not sure if you will remember me from last meeting. I'm dealing with a severe hoarder situation next door. I did speak to Jack McIntyre on Friday and the property has now been posted. The court unfortunately has given them another seven days to clean up this property. My thing is, is how in the world, my questions to either council or some type of committee, hopefully, is how is it that this property was allowed to get this bad before it was posted? This is not a short-term issue, this has been going on for 20 years. I moved here five years ago and I first started conversating on a regular basis with the ordinance department last spring. What is it that can be put in place to prevent this issue from happening to this extent in the future? Another issue that I have is what is in place to inform ordinance or property department when the water is shut off at a property to investigate or ensure that people still are not living at the property? And I think that there's a process that needs to be put in place moving forward for interdepartmental communication and action for further issues. I think that this went on way too long before it was addressed. It was not properly followed up on, on a regular basis. When I talked to Officer Ortman last year, he agreed with me that these people were going to continue to be a problem and continue to have been a problem for years. So I think that there should have been a follow-up process in place where these people should have been followed up on long before now and action should have been taken long before now. And that is my statement.
Anybody want to remark on that? Thank you, Tina. Any more public comments?
Council Chair.
Councilman Muscat.
You know, I had my, I think I raised my hand earlier when the gentleman with the used car lot was speaking.
Oh, I'm sorry.
But that's okay. I understand his frustration. I don't understand what the moratorium has to do with a business that was already existing. It's not a new business, it may be a new owner, but it's not a new business. And I don't think we should penalize that business because of that moratorium of not having new business, okay? If it was, you know, something, if it was a different type of business, I could understand. But the man has, you know, got his CFO, he got everything. Matter of fact, there's a business that really never have a business license, still operating as a hookah business. So why can't this gentleman get his license? That's my concern and that's what I got to say.
Okay, Mr. Director McIntyre, did you want to speak? Okay, let me unmute you, hold on. There you go.
Hey, thank you. Well, first of all, I want to thank Councilman Abdullah for bringing up the elephant that's in the room. I think this has been so chaotic at times, all of us trying to work together. And I'm not quite sure, my background is actually, and if people want to research it, they can. My background's in mental health and I just feel like we all need to take a deep breath and start really doing the work for the people. We say it and then we turn around and we do other things. So I just want to reiterate, in 2014, it was suggested, actually by the chief of staff, Chrissy Lazzle, and the mayor, in the mayor's office, that we train our ordinance officers to take on the responsibility of animal control. It's a huge responsibility, the training is extensive, it is 100 hours. And in addition to the 100 hours, the goal that I set was that we do additional hours. So everybody's evaluated by Michigan Humane Society Shelter. If you're going to be an animal control officer in this department, we have to make sure that you're comfortable dealing with animals. So everybody goes and they're evaluated first by the Michigan Humane Society and then that information comes back. If they meet the requirements to be an animal control officer, then we start the training. When they become a full-time officer in our department, they have six months to complete the training. We've hired a company called ACES. They put all of us through the training, it was very brutal. Our first day on the job, we had three pit bulls that were literally charging us. All of us were very nervous, but we were training and we do it consistently. And I'm actually kind of glad that Mr. Parrish brought this up because I was really stunned when I saw an email circulating around questioning whether or not I have the qualifications or the certification. And I'm like, seriously, we're going to go to this level? It's so easy to verify. And I'm sorry that I sent, my mother liked John Kennedy and also liked that John Kennedy went by Jack Kennedy. That's what she did with me, she named me John and she called me Jack from day one. So I have a certificate. I'll be glad to show it to anybody that wants to come. I respond to all the animal calls all weekend long, you can verify that with the police dispatch. I get multiple calls all weekend long. We do good things for the community with animal control. We started hosting vaccine clinics here at City Hall where we offer very cheap vaccines for people. And what's interesting, and this just came up in a conversation today when I was in HR, like other first responders, these guys are first responders too. They do a very critical job in our community and sometimes they don't get the recognition. So I will be glad to post my certificate on Facebook if that's what's necessary. But I am really, really tired of the accusations. I'm tired of being asked, are we, why would I accept food? I mean, I was actually accused of taking food at my counter.
We are at the three-minute limit, I apologize.
That's fine, that's fine.
Okay, anybody else, any other? Do I hear a motion to?
Councilor, turn. To port.
For by Councilman Bazey, I'm sorry, Councilman Bazey, motion supported by Councilman Muscat. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, everyone, have a good night.
Thank you.